Okay, welcome to the village board meeting. Regular village monthly board meeting, Monday, December 3rd, 2018. Okay, the upcoming meetings, the next village board workshop meeting will be Wednesday, January 2nd. Does anyone have any conflicts with that workshop meeting date? That's a change. Okay, and then the next village board meeting will be Monday, January 7th. So it'll be Wednesday to Monday. Guys, good? Good down there?
Good.
7:00 PM, correct. Okay, at this time it's 8:06. I'd like to open a public here, make a motion to open a public hearing, continuation of public hearing to consider local law to define permitted uses of pods and/or dumpsters. Have a motion? Mr. Hagan, second and by. Mr. Gerard?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Want me to jump in?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, as the board and the public know, we've been working on this for quite a while. Obviously, we have two new trustees, so you know, we may wish to discuss it tonight and then maybe put it over to give you some time to look at it. I'd leave that up to you if you'd prefer to do it that way, that might make sense. We can see, hear what the public has to say. Generally speaking, I know that you were here the last time, but this issue originally came up both for what we're calling temporary storage containers or pods and then dumpsters. The concern has been, you know, sometimes you might see a pod on a property for several months and there's really no law addressing it. Frankly, they're not really permitted. There would be a structure that you'd have to get a building permit for, similar to a shed. Other municipalities, Clarkstown I know has a law with respect to this. Orange Town recently passed one that I worked on with respect to this. So it's a way to, and I think I've addressed it, I'll try to go quickly, with respect to pods, that if somebody has a pod for two weeks, you don't need a permit. The purpose of the permit is really, is not revenue generating, the purpose of a permit after 14 days is to keep some control over, to have some idea of how long the person intends to have the pod, make sure they're complying with the law with respect to the pods, so in terms of size and height, et cetera. So again, that's the reasoning. I mentioned a couple of the other municipalities. Again, I mentioned in Orange Town, they actually prefer to have longer time. I know, speaking of this board, they prefer to kind of keep it shorter. Again, that's a legislative decision for the members of this board and it's as presented. In terms of dumpsters, I see Mr. Ortiz is here. The building department also had, suggested we include dumpsters in this. And again, same thing, two weeks, a person can have a dumpster, you don't have to get a permit. Might be cumbersome and, you know, people really don't know that you would need a permit for something like that. If a dumpster were in place for more than two weeks, you would need a permit. And again, sometimes people use dumpsters for just getting rid of junk, cleaning out their basement, cleaning out their attic, whatever, it's easier. So somebody might want that for two weeks and you wouldn't need a permit. After that, you could have it for a longer period of time, maybe if you have a bigger situation going on. The one difference, or a significant difference between the pods and the dumpsters, and this was, came from the building department, they didn't want to discourage folks, you know, doing a kitchen, doing an addition. If somebody gets a building permit, they would not need a separate permit for a dumpster. So the dumpster would be controlled or
Attached.
monitored, let's say, by, through the building department, through the building permit. So the building inspectors could look at it, if there's a problem, if they weren't complying with the law in terms of keeping it neat and emptying it, et cetera, they could, you know, you'd be subject to revocation of the building permit. So again, that came from the building department, that was really their suggestion, I'm not sure how the board felt about it, but that was kind of a thing, that currently, that's how it's permitted. If you have a building permit, you're okay with a dumpster. So the feeling from them was, in terms of enforcement, that they didn't want to hinder the use of dumpsters because they're necessary, kind of a necessary evil, so to speak. And again, balancing a homeowner's desire to have a dumpster or a pod with the rest of the neighborhood not having, you know, another structure in their, in a driveway or in a, on a property for, you know, years, months or years on end. So that was basically the feeling behind this law and that's where we're at. So I don't know if the board members have commented or you want to open up to the public.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Anyone from the building department that would like to speak?
I would like to just, one thing that I mentioned prior with the dump, in respect to dumpsters, that I think it's important to have in there worded that there has to be active use of the dumpster. Currently, we have at the Cole Building on 59 next to the hospital, has been a yellow dumpster sitting next to that building for probably three or four months and hasn't been used at all. And it's, you know, it's been sitting out there next to the building, it hasn't been used.
So you would like to see it say "active use"?
Well, I'm sorry to cut you off. It's in there, it's, I added, "The building inspector may order removal of a dumpster if the work permitted to be conducted pursuant to the permit is not ongoing or otherwise a violation." So I think that covers the situation that you had mentioned.
And that would be the reason why, I mean.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? On this issue, please come up and state your name and address.
Carol Verona, Suffolk, New York.
Hi, Carol.
Hi. One other thing, I go by and I see them sitting there with all this debris and stuff over it, I see sometimes the wind blowing the stuff out, it's on the ground. Can we request a cover or a tarp be placed on them if they're going to be there for any length of time instead of just left the dumpsters that they roll off and things?
I believe that they need to keep the debris inside the container.
Right.
Right, so you're saying to request a cover when it's full?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's review that.
All right.
Thank you, Carol. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this matter? Okay.
What was it, trustee?
Go ahead, Paul. Steve, I'm sorry.
I have a question. So during the 14 days on either the pod or the dumpster, that people can collectively, I believe it's over 180-day period, that they can do 14 days, it could be five days here, four days there, whatnot, but since there's no permit required, who's monitoring that? In other words, what's to keep somebody from putting it out one day every week? I'm not saying that that's realistic, but how is, what mechanism is going to monitor the usage?
Right, and that's a good question. I mean, that came up before and the reason we worded it this way was, you know, in the unlikely, as you say, in the unlikely event that somebody puts one out for a week and then, you know, six months later puts it up or three months later puts a pod in again. You know, we can only cover so much, you know, I mean, if we really got into the weeds on this thing, we could say, well, if you do this or that. I think the short answer is, it's a small village, you know, between the code enforcement officers, the building inspector, neighbors, you know, when they become aware of this, look, is it, is it on the 14th or the 15th day are we going to know you got us out the permit? Probably not, but you know, if a building inspector sees it today, goes by, you know, three weeks later and it's still there, that's when they might get a knock on the door to, you know, saying, do it. So that's kind of, I understand what you're saying, but you know, if, it's good, not perfect, I guess is the answer.
I just, I guess my point is, unless there's some mechanism, I mean, I feel like someone ought not get a permit, but at least to register, hey, I'm, you know, maybe some thing that I have to put out a pod or dumpster for this many days, this week, you know, some kind of mechanism that you can at least keep track, if there's going to be a rule. Now, I'm not, you know, I'm still thinking about it, I don't know if this is good, bad or indifferent, but I feel like if there's going to be a rule, there's got to be a way to monitor that rule, that's all I'm saying. Not necessarily a permit, but a way of keeping track.
Advising the building department or something.
Something.
That's something, you know, again, that's why we're having the debate, the discussion and continue it, but we can, you know, we can discuss it if you want to, I can come up, try to come up with some language. But again, part of the reason for putting that in is to not get every person, you know, somebody today says, you know what, I'm gonna, this is the weekend, let's get rid of all the stuff in the basement or whatever, and they call up and get a dumpster thrown on there, you know what I mean? They might not think, you know, to do it, which is why we kind of put that two-week cushion in there to kind of
And we have to also look out for a little bit of overregulation at the same time. You know, you want to have the ability to have a homeowner bring in a pod or a dumpster, even a pod, if they bring a pod in for two days, they load it up and then the pod company comes back to the, to the location and removes the pod, you know, or the same thing with the dumpster. Fill the dumpster up that day, remove it, it's gone, it's done. You know, so it is a line to, the fine line to walk. But we can, you know, we're not going to vote on this tonight, we're going to have further discussion on it and you guys can, you know, develop your criteria that you would like to see in it.
Okay, yeah, my only point on the pods is, on point number three, it says that we can extend after the initial 30-day time period for an additional 180 days. Just a suggestion that maybe, maybe it's, you can apply for an additional 90 days, but up to two times, just so it's, I mean, just to have, either it's 30 or 180, just seems like a long period of time.
Yeah, and actually, that's one of the points I kind of mentioned with the differing municipalities, you know, Clarkstown's is a little longer, I'm sorry, Clarkstown's a little shorter, Orange Town was a little longer, Suffolk is going to be whatever Suffolk is, you know, so, yeah, that's something, you know, I defer to the board as what they want to do. I will note that, and especially for the pods, the extension is only if you have a permit for construction activity. So, you know, again, yeah, that might be something to keep on, but again, I, if you want to almost take a straw poll tonight and see what people prefer on that, on number three, you know, for additional 90 and additional, I think originally, I think I might have had that in there.
Yeah, I think we did. We had the, we had the shorter length of time. Yep, we've been going back and forth on it. So keep that in mind for number three, instead of additional 180 days provided the applicant has a valid existing building permit, there's a recommendation for two
Two 90.
Two 90 days
Have I haven't looked at Clarkstown's in a while, I think that's what theirs might say, but I'll look at it again, hopefully.
That's a good idea.
Now, are these regulations in places like Clarkstown, have they been in effect for quite some time or is this a new thing?
I think both of those were passed this year. I know Orange Town's was passed this year, I'm pretty sure Clarkstown's was also passed just this year, so.
I was going to suggest it might be good on a place that has had it in effect for at least a few years to ask what has worked.
Yeah, they haven't, the, that's, that's kind of where they're at with it. I think it's more of a situation, you know, we had the, somebody from a pod company at one of the hearings, who, you know, was against it, but they had told me that, I think they said maybe 67% of their pods are off within six months anyway. So we're talking a smaller percentage that could create a problem and, you know, this kind of deals with that, but that's just for your information.
Any other questions? Public or the board? Okay, I can make a motion to continue the public hearing until January 7th, 2019 at 7:05. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, okay. It's now 8:20. I'd like to make a motion to open continuation of public hearing to consider a local law establishing school zone signage on Suffolk Place at Acru de Rol Assan Mosque. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Moore Hertzman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in regards to establishing a school zone? Okay, at this time, so the history of six Suffolk places, Suffolk Community Center, original building built in 1919 for religious purposes, there was an addition and remodeling building built in 1948. Wait a minute. That's right. The property was subdivided in 1996 and the 41 Washington Avenue property was purchased by the Village of Suffolk and became the community center. So that's the other piece, I don't know, where are we here? 75, a new building was erected at 41 Washington, owned and operated by the Congration Sons of Israel. So this is a piece of property that we're talking about, it's currently a mosque and they're currently seeking school zone signage on Suffolk Place. They don't have, let's see what we have, they don't have their beds permit in place, we're waiting for that information to come forward. So at this time, I would like to continue the public hearing also for 1/7/19 at 7:10. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, we're up to the fire department. Chief Lapore.
Good evening, I'd say thank you to the, you know, congratulations to the new trustees, we're forward to working on it, everybody is here. Some things, we'd like you to accept Mohammed Raybar, an over 18 member to the hose company.
Okay, I have a motion to accept Mohammed Raybar, over 18, to the hose company. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
And then we still have our meeting scheduled for January 17th, 7:00 PM with the line officers of fire department.
Oh yeah, what was the date on that?
January 17th, 7:00 PM.
Is that good for you guys?
Okay, we're going to have to notice that meeting, we'll have that as a public meeting.
Okay. All right, I was just wondering if the, if the board had any more discussion on the bay floor?
Okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Good, okay, 7:00 PM. Probably at the hose company, we'll, we'll figure that out and then we'll notice it. I'm sorry, go ahead, chief.
I was wondering if there was any more discussion on the bay floor repairs at the Hose and Hook and Ladder Company?
There was and we're still under discussion with that. Yes.
Okay. And the same with the replacement of the
Yes.
192V. Okay. The truck committee has been very active, they've been looking at several manufacturers of fire trucks, we've had several committee meetings looking at it, so progress is being made on that. And the last thing I have is, the department's asking if the village board would reimburse them for $150 for refreshments after the Suffolk parade, if it was possible.
Yes, we did discuss that, right? So I have a motion for the reimbursement of $150 for refreshments
After the holiday parade.
That were served to the neighboring firefighters.
Right. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. You should get it this year.
All right, great. Thank you, appreciate it. And that's all we have, thank you.
Thank you. You guys did a great job at the, at the parade once again, really, you guys are doing outstanding work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Kathy Mills, recreation update.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Steve and to Paul, congratulations.
Thank you.
And welcome, and not even welcome, but congratulations to you, Amy, look forward to working with you. Okay, so the first thing we have coming up, Midget Mounties will be doing a trophy night over at the community center tomorrow night.
What night, I'm sorry?
Tomorrow night, Tuesday, the trophy night, I'm sorry, trophy night for the Midget Mounties.
Oh, okay.
They were originally going to be at the high school, but they were bumped from there, so we are hosting them at the community center tomorrow night.
Okay.
And it will be at 6:30 to 8:30 tomorrow. This Thursday, December 6th, will be Arti Time. Arti Time is a program for seniors and to adults in the community, they come over to the community center and do a nice project, and that will be at 12 o'clock over at the community center. This Friday, mayor, will be the Make-A-Wish presentation of the letters that we collected at this past weekend's parade, and we worked with Connor School, and we have had drop-offs, so we're collecting the letters now, putting them together. We'll have the number for the amount of money that the Village of Suffolk is able to participate with Make-A-Wish. We don't give money towards Make-A-Wish, but every dot, every letter that we give to Macy's, they will be making in our name, so we're looking forward to
Was it a dollar per letter?
It's a dollar per letter.
Right.
The one good thing about it though, the day that we do the Make-A-Wish, which will be this Friday, Macy's will double it, so it's $2 for every letter.
Okay.
So that will be at 9 o'clock on Friday morning, so we can chat if we're, if you're able to make it up Friday morning. The Dare Dance is Friday, December 7th. Chief Osborne will be this weekend, it's, Friday night at 7:00. Next Friday, December 14th, we will be hosting the lead group, that's the high school group lead, and that will be from 6:00 to 10:00. The hoop shoot that we work with the Mawa Elks every year will be Saturday, December 15th, and that will be at 11:00 AM. And then that's it for this 2018 year. So it's been a great year, we're looking forward to another great year. At the January meeting, we'll put out our calendar for all the upcoming events, so good things.
Hey, you guys did a great job once again, thank you for everything, you know, the parade was another huge success and
It was, it was great.
Everything that recreation does is always a success.
Appreciate it.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Clifford Theater, the Clifford Theater float was outstanding. Mr. Fred Rela.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Welcome on board, Steve and Paul. First of all, the Tree City USA application, which is an annual application that has to be in, so that we can receive the designation as being the Tree City USA, we should be hearing about that in the springtime, the actual acceptance of that. We put in the final paperwork to receive reimbursement for the $7,000 with the Division of Criminal Justice Services. $5,000 of that was for the resurfacing of the Dare hockey rink and $2,000 was for the Clifford Theater play production that was put on in August. So the Division of Criminal Justice Services is actually pretty quick in reimbursing, so they say 30 days, knock wood. We were very fortunate, we had a $250,000 grant for new digester boilers to be put in the DPW, and we received a $250,000 check as a reimbursement, and Mike Chunito will be handling the processing of that check.
Perfect.
Really.
Great.
So that was good news. Also, good news was through the Environmental Facilities Court, we received three grants, were awarded three grants, the reimbursement grants, so there's a lot of documentation that has to be done between now until we actually get the funds, you know, contracts to be signed, back and forth, lots of paperwork, but the total amount is $565,096. So that was a real team effort between the DPW, Charles Sawicki, Mike Chunito, and I don't want to forget Danielle Curtin, also was very helpful in helping process all that paperwork and getting it to them. So that was really good news.
Standing.
If you were at the meeting last month, I mentioned that we got, were awarded $125,000 for a new backhoe for the DPW and $115,000 for the repaving of parking lot B, which is across from the post office. So like I said at the workshop, once you combine tally all these hundreds of thousands of dollars, the digester boiler, the other sewer abatement type of grants, and the recent backhoe, we're up over a million dollars, so
That's great.
That was really great.
Doing a great job, Fred.
And we, that's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
We need some more. Bring it on, we could use the money. Great, thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
You have any questions? Police Department Chief Osborne.
First off, Paul, Steve, congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Amy, congratulations on your position.
Thank you.
Everybody else in attendance who received a position, and I'm just going to give you a quick update, we have nothing to vote on this month in the PDN. In November, we had 540 police calls and police boppers, calls for service, two of our officers, officers Ortiz, and Randy's gone by the son, Ryan, Ed Officer Adams will be receiving lifesaving awards at the Lockland County PBA dinner this Thursday night, and that's from an incident that I reported to the board, think back in February, March, that was with Washington Avenue, we found a gentleman who wandered out of his house, unfortunately, early in the morning, wasn't really clothed and basically was on the verge of hypothermia and they got him to the hospital and were credited with a lifesave, which was great, said that was a good job, and they got him there within two minutes, which really, once again, goes back to, and I stress this, and to new board members, the need and the critical effective response time and the need for, for a fast response in emergency situations like this, so, so that's some good news we brought to the board, it's going to be this week, they're getting the awards. Our department, we've been working for the last several months on a new records management and dispatching system called Spillman, we've had the same system for the last 14 years. This is paid for and run for by the county, eight of the 10 county police departments, including us, are now on this, it is a very involved system, CAD system, which means you dispatch the cars through the computer and on the radio, and it's a very complex system, we're just working out the kinks, it's been going on for months, we just went live on it last Tuesday, and we have representatives from the, from the county sheriff's department as well as the company onsite, they'll be here eight hours a day for the next three days again, just, just to start a last week's learning, and I think it's going pretty smooth so far, Lieutenant Lockland is overseeing the implementation, but it's a, it's a lot of work, but it's going to be good for us in the long run, more affordable and much more upstate of the art. Our tour drive is in high gear, we have a very large amount of volunteers this year, different groups that are going to be coming to help us out. Kathy, thank you again for the use of the center, we'll be using it out in a couple weeks, that's in, that's kicking in really high gear and it's going fantastic. This week, we are doing in-service training, one of, three of our officers, Detective Sergeant Marsh is SWAT team leader for the county SWAT team, one of our officers, he's running the training with Officer DeLuca and Officer Semiram, for all officers, and we're going over TESA training, yearly in-service training, less lethal weapons that we have to our, at our disposal that we use, we're also going on patrol tactics, including low light situations, use the ballistic shields, we do this once a year, as well as our firearms, just to keep up with the situations that officers do face and may face out in the field. That's going on this week with different officers training every day. And last but not least, Kathy, thank you for helping the parade, all officers are very proud to be part of it, and we worked this last couple weeks between the tour drive and as well as the parade, Charles and I was unbelievable, awesome, the work they did for you guys, and Kathy, your people, so all together, I want to thank you, because when a situation came up with us that we needed help, I called you up and you took care of it, so. Want to thank you guys for everything and support, and said, welcome aboard, if you have any questions, don't, you know, feel free to contact me anytime.
Thank you. You know, I just want to say in regards to the parade last night with the thousands, I mean, there were thousands of people. To go without incident and to control the crowds as your department did, you should be very proud and thank the men that they did an outstanding job. I mean, I walked up and down a route numerous times and it was, it was perfectly secure. I thought you did a great job.
Yeah, but I want to also mention Jim, 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 I want to thank you, because while I was standing up there just in front of your own, you took care of the field operation of, of thousands of people, so I want to thank you.
Yep, thank you, Jim. Good job. And that's not, you know, without saying, recreation did a fabulous job and also the DPW did another outstanding job, you know, I believe they were shorthanded also, and then to monitor and corral thousands of people and, and put out the trucks and put out the barriers and put out the signs, and they did a fabulous job, so relay that to the men there too, also, Charles, please. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up through audience participation. Anyone from the audience that would like to come up and speak, step up to the microphone, state your name and address. Now, be easier from the microphone.
Pat O'Brien, Cross Street, Suffolk. I just wanted to make you aware of the depression in the roadway on Orange Avenue near Boynton Place.
Okay.
Why can't the utilities pave it to the road level? It's depressed now, and it's annoying when you go through there.
Yeah, that's a good point. Charles, can we have a, can we take a look at that, at Boynton and Orange, where they crossed with the gas main?
You're allowed to, it's our reach out. You can go to, that's a, uh, highway. You have to, it's a station here.
Okay.
Is it on our, or is it?
Yes.
And one other thing, a suggestion. Your sign at Virginia Mensner Park there, you already have electricity there. Maybe you could update that to an electronic sign, like over near...
Oh, the bulletin board?
Yes. Like the Tallman Firehouse hat.
Right, 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 right.
And it's more visible. That plastic in front of the sign, at times, especially with the sun, you can't read it. And if you're going past there, you can't read it, because it's not enough time.
Okay. I know that was a donation made by the Rotary, I believe. So we're gonna, you know what? We'll speak to the Rotary, see if they want to make another donation.
Okay, thank you.
A great idea. Thank you, Pat.
That is great. My name is Glenda Saunders. I'm a retired teacher. And I live in Suffolk at Ramaphosa, which is directly across from the Suffolk Middle School. And I'm here because I received an email from the new trustees. And part of their email said if they could help, they would like to help. So I said, "I'm coming down to this meeting tonight and see if you could help us." We've been trying to, there is a fire alarm that is on the corner of our property. It is a fire alarm that belongs to Montebello, Airmont, does not belong to Suffolk, but it's on Suffolk property, and it's right by our homes. When that fire alarm goes off, it is extremely loud. You, indoors, you have to close your ears. If you just put a baby asleep, forget about it, that baby is up. We are trying, we've been trying for years to get this alarm away from families that are trying to just live a normal life, and it's really a horrible situation. And we're asking for your help. Maybe you can help. I've been in touch with people like Nita Lowey, and I have gotten nowhere. And the fire department is very, very stubborn about it. Many fire departments today don't even use an alarm. They use their beepers or whatever. I know Suffolk has an alarm, but when it's right near your home, it is just a terrible living situation. And I'm asking for your help in this situation.
Okay, we're going to take a look into that. Definitely.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? See Carol.
Can I address her?
No, you addressed the Board, Carol.
All right, I will address the Board.
Okay.
And reference to her problem.
Okay.
It has been brought up before, not only in Suffolk, but with Tallman and the others. There's a purpose for the alarm. If there is no means of electronic contact, that audible alarm is for everybody. It was used for major incidences, not just fires. We've had alarms dating back to when we had air raids and World War II and that. And we would have drills, and the alarms would go off. We have it for Indian Point and other parts of the county. This is for the benefit and the safety and protection of all those who are within the area in the sound of that alarm. You can't pick up a phone or just text on a cellphone or something else with the media and expect everybody in the area to know what's going on. California fires is a great example. People caught in the buildings that weren't able to receive notice or contact. There was no alarm sound to go out to these people.
Okay. They're very valid points. I think that both of you make very valid points, but I think we just need to do a little research, just to look into it a bit and see...
Right. And as I'm saying, this has been an ongoing, it has been looked into, and this was set in place in order for the safety of the others.
Okay.
Not just the person that doesn't want to hear it.
Right.
When they move in, they should know that there's going to be alarm in that area, and that's to warn other people.
Okay. But we will, we'll definitely look into it for the benefit of all.
Okay.
All right?
Now, my next topic.
Yes.
That building on the corner of Chestnut Street and Orange Avenue.
Which building?
I spoke about it sometime. There's only one big building there.
Okay, go ahead.
You said they would take it under advisement and think about, look at the future things. But it just seems to be so massive. They have taken away from that road. Now, you weren't here when we had the other previous large buildings put in. There was a group that wanted to make common walls so they get more business space within their buildings. And it was considered landlocking, which is a safety feature, because they had roadways, driveways in between these buildings, walkways with sidewalks that you could get up and down and around.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you've missed it. The only emergency is to go up and around, maybe you can get in from the back. There isn't much place to get in from the back. Different times, I have gone down Chestnut Street, and there has been stuff delivered, dropped, dumped, piles on piles. I didn't take pictures, because I figured this is common knowledge. Anybody goes down can see all this stuff piled up, not put away inside the building, in the warehouse, in the back of the property, but sitting there right out onto the road. Now, we have an ordinance, and you are not supposed to obstruct the sidewalk to start with. You already have a diminished road access going up to Orange Avenue if you need to get large vehicles, if you have an emergency. No room to pull a vehicle off on the side to get another vehicle around.
Well, they're still under construction at the same time, so the building's unoccupied, but we will look into the obstructions in the roadway and the sidewalk, or, you know, with their construction deliveries. We'll take a look at it, Carol.
Because it's not every day.
Right.
From time to time, I go through, and I wonder, why? It's nighttime. They're closed now. Why is it all sitting?
Mm-hmm. Interesting. Okay. We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
And our water problem. In the past, we have had droughts, where we have low water tables. And we have had a problem getting enough water. We've had to restrict our water to the other people's use in the village. This happens all over.
Mm-hmm.
It happens a lot down in Jersey. We've had the low water to them.
Right.
With all the building, please take into consideration how much they'll use, because that water isn't going to go on forever. You're drying up.
Right. We want to protect the natural resources. That's one of our...
That's done, yes.
Yes, that's what you're getting at. Absolutely.
Okay.
We agree with that. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay. Mr. Charles Zawicki, Department of Public Works, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The crosswalks on Washington Avenue at East Malpey, near All Souls Community Church, and at East Maple, near St. Mary's Church. And the parallel parking stalls on Washington Avenue, Essex Lane, Milford Lane, Bon Air Circle, and Bon Air Circle West have been completed.
Good. Great. Yeah, the crosswalks look good. We received a couple of thank you emails in regards to them, too.
Yeah, I think they're, should work out well.
Right.
The, during the workshop meeting, I distributed proposals for review and consideration by the Board. So we had, the first proposal was from three engineering consultants that have submitted proposals to conduct a review of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and blood flow project design. So I know we...
Right.
You have the opportunity to take a look at that, and we can have further discussion on that.
Yeah.
I think I owe Paul, I'll get, well, matter of fact, I have it. Why don't I give it to you right now? I think, Steve, you have, you received that during the workshop?
I was given some information, and then someone, some...
What I'll do is...
Some was taken back.
I'm sorry?
Like, I wasn't allowed to keep certain information.
Ah, okay.
Because I wasn't a member of it.
Why don't I, I can email it to you?
Sure.
Okay. And then the second proposal was for the wastewater treatment plant ultraviolet disinfection treatment unit that currently needs to be rebuilt, replacing the ultraviolet bulbs and ballasts. The last item is, the developer of the Sheldon has completed new curb, sidewalk, and associated placement of asphalt binder work on Blauvelt Way, and will be milling and repaving Blauvelt Way and a portion of Chestnut Street during the second quarter of 2019.
During the second quarter of 2019?
Yes.
Why so late?
Well, we can't do it the first quarter, it's too cold.
Was he scheduled to do it earlier?
He, his intent was to do it this fall.
Right.
Right. But we ran out of weather, essentially.
Right.
It's just got too cold for him to be able to do that. So, but he has done, you know, done some repair work, and...
So is he going to monitor that repair work from the disturbance that heat caused throughout the winter? Like for sinkage or whatever?
Right, right. Yeah. And we'll stay on top of that as well.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, there's no question that that's going to have some failure during the winter.
Yeah, we, well, that was this past week, actually it was last week, he did spend some time making some of those repairs and modifying it such that we should have less of an issue through the winter. We will keep an eye on it.
All right. Okay. All right.
Okay, that's it. Any questions?
Are they taking down the fencing around the perimeter? I know they took the barricades away.
I'll have to check. I couldn't say for sure.
It's probably still not secure. Okay.
Yeah. I think what they, the plan, as you're probably aware, they can be doing landscaping work in there.
Right, they started.
They still might be able to do some of that work, unless we get some really foul weather, you know?
When is there planned time to actually open?
It's my understanding that they're looking at February, February, March, to start moving people in, so that might slip as well.
All right. Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, welcome aboard, Stephen and Paul. What we have before you is a set of resolutions. The first one, dealing with returning unused funds that were originally provided by the general fund to the capital projects fund for various projects. And these projects have either closed out with an overage, meaning slightly overpaid, or actually came in under budget. So the first one is the facade project, which requires a minor contribution of $785.59. We have within the theater drainage project money of $7,100 that was not used and can be used for these other projects. And then finally, the sewer abatement project has been completed, but requires a minor contribution of $2,019.90. So what we're asking the Board to do with this resolution is allow the general fund to receive $4,294.51 from the capital projects fund as a return of unused funds. And it explains using the $7,100 to pay for those other two projects, and again, netting out to $4,294.51 that will be returned to the general fund.
Chris, I have the resolution to return the unused funds originally provided by the general fund to the capital projects funds, and to provide general fund contributions to a certain capital project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do, motion by Frank, second, and by...
Second.
Paul Gerard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
The next resolution is transferring funds and closing several completed capital projects. These projects were very old, dating back to 2012 and earlier. And what we had done, well, actually, back then, from 2009 to 2012, these projects had run into project overages, in other words, over expended projects. And they had never gone back to the Board for an authorized transfer of funds. So what we had done on our, for accounting purposes, is set them aside as an advance from the general fund until such time as we would determine the best purpose of either financing the project or simply reclassifying it as a transfer. And generally accepted accounting principles do allow us to reclassify it as a transfer, meaning it doesn't require any cash. But what it does, in effect, is reflect a transfer rather than advance to the funds. And with that, we can now close the projects.
Chris, I have the resolution in front of me to transfer funds and close completed capital projects. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee, Stephen Alpert, I'm sorry. Trustee Alpert, second, and by...
Second.
Trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
The next project is to amend our capital project for the sewer system improvements. And this Fred had touched on earlier. We had received the $250,000 grant. We actually did receive the money from DASNY. And previously, that project was to be funded from debt, totally from debt. So we're amending the project to reflect the $250,000 grant coming in and de-authorizing the $250,000 that we had originally used to finance it through debt.
So I have the resolution authorizing amendment to Capital Project 2018-01, 2018-B Sewer System Improvements for DASNY, Sam Grant. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzmann, second, and by...
Second.
Second by trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
The next resolution is to transfer funds from the contingent account to the attorney's account for legal, outside legal services. Initially, when that was determined in the budget or estimated in the budget, since that time, there have been several different reasons or occasions for the village attorney's office to use outside counsel for specialized attorney or legal matters. As such, we're estimating that $55,000 will be needed to close out or to provide funding through the end of the year. And this resolution is to transfer $55,000 from the contingent account to the attorney's account for outside legal services.
So I have the resolution amending the 2018-2019 general fund budget to transfer funds from contingency to the village attorney legal services. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Hagan, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Hertzmann.
Can I just ask a couple of questions?
Yep. Discussion.
Mr. Genito, you said that there were various requirements that added up to this. This wasn't necessarily one...
Oh, no.
...issue that drove...
No, the outside legal services... No, the, the, outside legal services are used for everything from contract nego, or labor negotiations or labor issues. That's the majority of it, but also sometimes there are issues related to defending the village in liability claims. So it's not just one particular case, if you will.
They were unforeseen items? These were unanticipated?
Well, the amount was unforeseen. In other words, when you get into using outside legal counsel, you estimate you're going to use so much for, let's say, negotiations-
Yeah.
...on contracts, and then it turns out that they're more intensive or more comprehensive or complicated than initially thought, and there's more use of the outside counsel.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
The next one is a resolution to adopt a technology use policy. One thing that we do not have as of yet is a technology use policy, using any sort of village-owned technology, whether that be email, the internet, social media, websites, et cetera, and it goes right down to fax machines and copiers and so forth. This policy makes it clear that the predominant use of village-owned technology is for village business purposes, although a nominal amount of personal use would be acceptable, but in any case, it obviously would prohibit anybody from using it for illegal or inappropriate purposes. And this policy, once adopted, every employee that uses the village technology would be required to sign off on this policy, indicating that they understand their responsibilities as an employee of the village or official of the village in using technology.
Chris, I have the resolution adopting a technology use policy. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, second.
Second.
Second, trustee Hertzman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
The next resolution, as you know, we, we were very fortunate that the Ramapo Veterans Memorial Building Corp., the Veterans Association, is making improvements or providing the financing of some improvements to our parks in honor of our veterans. And as such, we never actually adopted a resolution to, while we did accept the donation, to actually amend the budget to allow for it. We estimate the amount is going to be approximately $7,000, but if it comes to more or less than that, we will come back to the board to make another amendment to the budget.
Okay.
But this will authorize the spending. Once again, all of that money is being reimbursed to us or paid to us as a donation from the veterans.
Okay, so I have a resolution here accepting a donation from Ramapo Veterans Memorial Building Corporation for the purpose of purchasing and installing various park improvements. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Alpert, and seconded by trustee Gerard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
The next resolution is that we have two pieces of obsolete computer equipment that we are asking to be deemed surplus. The hard drives have been removed and will be destroyed so that any confidential information, if it were on the hard drives, will not be accessible to anybody, and we'll then dispose of them in a manner that best fits the interest of the village. Typically, we look to see if anybody's willing to purchase the items, but in many cases, it ends up being either donated or trashed. So that, that's what this resolution does, is provides for the surplus of two pieces of obsolete computer equipment.
So I have the resolution to declare certain computer equipment as surplus. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, second.
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any discussion?
So, I, I mentioned this earlier at the meeting. When something's declared surplus, what sort of efforts are made as far as, like, selling them, as far as eBay or something like that? Is there some intrinsic procedure that, you know, you try to get rid of stuff that's been declared surplus?
Sure, the most, the more expensive equipment, like vehicles, are typically put on to a web auction site-
Yeah.
-to see what kind of, what value we can get from it. When we deal with computer equipment, this equipment sometimes is like $19.90 or maybe 2005.
Sure.
You know, it's very old stuff, it's not really-
In this case, these particular two things are more than 10 years old, let's say?
They're, yes, typically more than 10 years old, and but what we will often do is then try to contact BOSI's or, or another, somebody that might want to use them for instructional purposes, and if not, then we, they have to be disposed of properly because they're electronic equipment. So we will look for somebody to take it off our hands at the very least.
Yeah.
You can't just dispose of them in the normal stream of solid waste.
I just wanted to make sure that an effort is made to either donate them or, or sell them if they have, if they do have value. Obviously, a computer more than 10 years is probably-
Yeah, one, one of the issues is, we take the hard drives out.
Yeah.
So the person that buys these units doesn't have a hard drive with any, you know, so they, they're pretty much almost useless, other than for obvious recyclers.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
And the last thing is just an update on the volunteer firefighter cancer benefit program. Basically, there is a company that does provide insurance for firefighters, volunteer firefighters under this new law, and as, just to refresh everybody's memory on it, there is a general municipal law that was recently passed. It's under section 205-CC, and what that does is provide to volunteer firefighters that meet certain eligibility requirements, coverage for cancers, the cost of cancers that may come up, that may be related to what they were doing as volunteer firefighters. And again, they have to meet certain eligibility requirements, and there's certain limitations on that. And when, after that general municipal law was passed, and it does become effective January 1 of 2019, we're provide, we are required to have in place that insurance. There is a company, well, Hartford, that is offering a policy on that, and it's promoted by our own workers' comp carrier, PERMA, as well as Workers' Comp Alliance, which is another company, and New York Conference of Mayors is supporting it. We contacted our own insurance broker who went out and sought if there was any other insurance like it on the market. Currently, there is not, so it comes down to almost a sole source. We have asked the fire chiefs to send to me a list of the currently active volunteer firefighters, and the board will have to come up with a couple of provisions in terms of who would become eligible, because it's active firefighters who have passed a physical exam, and the exam wouldn't show any cancers currently, and that they are active firefighters who passed fit tests and so forth. Our fire chief has told us that anyone who has come in as a volunteer firefighter has had to take a physical to get there. So the question is for the board, whether they accept the physical of that date, or they want fresh physicals from the firefighters. And in any event, that information would be sent to the insurance company, not us, because of HIPAA rules, not being allowed to look at that information, and they would determine who is eligible for those purposes. But in any event, we have to have it in place by January 1. So my recommendation would be that, once the firefighters have sent us the list, the board should come up with a policy that essentially establishes who initially becomes eligible in terms of the physical. And by the way, this is only covering interior firefighters. So if you've been an interior firefighter and you move to become an exterior firefighter, if you were covered as an interior, you'll still be covered as an exterior. On the other, on the other hand, if you're strictly exterior, there is, it's not a coverage that's required for that purpose. So I'm going to recommend that the mayor appoint a couple of people to a committee to work in terms of, with the fire chiefs, to get the information we need and make sure we get it as quickly as possible to the company that's looking to provide us with a quote. And we'd have to put this into our budget for 2019-20.
All right.
And my understanding from reading this is there's two levels of coverage?
There, there is, yes, there are two levels of coverage, and one is more expensive than the other because it covers a bit more, but there's a, I think, in fact, we have a handout-
No, I have, I have, yeah.
-frequently asked question.
So we would have to, I guess, decide on what level of coverage is part of it.
And I realize you don't have the numbers back from the fire department yet, but do we have a guesstimate of how many members that might potentially qualify? Like, is, is it something like 20? Is it something like 200? I, I mean, just at least a ballpark.
Yeah, it wouldn't be 200. We have currently under our low sap, which is service award program, it lists something like 137 individuals, but those are individuals that have, are no longer necessarily in the fire service, but as active firefighters, but retired. So again, we have to find out, are they interior firefighters? Have they had the physical within the last year? And is the village going to require a physical, a new physical, for individuals to make sure we, everybody's starting at the same point? Going forward, anybody else that starts new when they get a physical, obviously, that's, they'll be covered very quickly, but we're talking about people that might have joined our fire department 10 years ago, and to the best of my knowledge, they're not required to get a new physical or submit new physical information every year. But again, I would-
But I think the program, from what I was reading, implied that to be covered, they'd, you know, they have to be confirmed free of cancer before the coverage starts.
That's my understanding of it as well, that they have to be free of cancer at the time that they entered the fire service. So, but again, you know, this, this is starting out January 1, so that's why more than likely a fresh physical, if it hasn't been done within a year, is probably called for.
Right. Okay.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
And just to talk to the point in the resolution and accepting the donation from the Vet, Ramapo Veterans Memorial Building Corporation, that's from the now-defunct VFW, Post Veterans of Foreign Wars, and the efforts of Tim McInnany and honoring all our veterans in the, in the village of suffering, and, you know, establishing different memorials and, and different signs and benches for, for reflecting. So I thank you, Tim McInnany, once again. Okay, next, trustees. Trustee Hagan.
Okay, thank you for saying that, Mayor, because one of my points was that the VFW, when they sold the building, created our corporation, and a lot of their money is helping veterans' parks, monuments, et cetera, in the village. I would like to make, for discussion or however we can proceed, Point Park has never been named a village park by, there's no name to the park. I would like to propose that we name it Dave Clifford Park in memory of Dave Clifford, who was a vice commander of the VFW? I'm not sure.
No, he wasn't a vice, he was president of the corporation.
President of the corporation after they sold the building.
He was a lifelong member of the suffering, and I understand he contributed a lot to the suffering.
And that's Pat O'Brien, who was a member of the VFW, and he's part, you're part of the corporation, too, right?
He was supposed to come tomorrow and bring objects for the fifth and fourth.
All right.
Thank you. So-
That's scheduled tomorrow.
Okay.
So I don't know how we proceed with this, but I'd like to either open a discussion or have a meeting or-
Okay, so we'll further this, the discussion. I mean, it sounds like, you know, we did discuss it at length with Tim and Pat and, and Frank. It's a great idea. I just want to share that information also with the, with the new trustees, and we'll see how we'll proceed with that, if possible. It's a great idea, though. All right. Anyone else? Trustees? New trustees? Welcome again. Great job. Okay, all right. The man, PBA contract. We are at the final stages of the PBA contract. Labor will be briefing the new trustees in regards to the new contract that, that has been proposed. Squires Gate FEMA grant project for acquisitions and elevation was approved by New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services for eligibility to move forward in the grant application process. So there's another step involved for, for this eligibility. Additional grant information and applications are due to DHSES, the Department, Division of Homeland Security, on December 19th, which we're currently working on. Okay, on that note, thank you for attending. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Frank Hagan, trust, seconded by Marva Hertzman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.